Good evening. Today is July 2nd, Tuesday, and this is a special, not a special, the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad. Would you all please rise for the...
I congratulate you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is roll call. Devono?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Trahell?
Here.
Ogultry?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Creago? Here. Item number two, approval of the agenda. Does council have any additions or corrections to the agenda as posted? Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Shu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Creago? Yes. Item number three, policy items and staff reports. Are there any policy items or reports from staff?
None, sir.
Okay. Item number four, petitions or communications oral or written. Before I call up the first individual, please be reminded that the communication is a five-minute limit. You will be reminded when there's one minute left. Please know that the council cannot respond to you if there's an issue that needs to be addressed. Staff will address it at a later date. First individual is Ray E., Ray A. Miller. Is that correct, sir?
Roy, but it's all right. You call me which one.
Roy? I'm sorry. Roy A. Miller? And you're trying to talk about...
Cougar Canyon, that lovely golf course, convention center, and equestrian riding stable. Anyway, where I'm at, on Bloom Street, we're having some drainage issues with the asphalt. It's breaking apart because they only got two inches of asphalt instead of four because they ran out of money during construction. And it's within the city limits where I live. So I'll be more than happy to show somebody it needs to be done. I could take some pictures and put in some kind of work request or something. I could do that. And I did talk to the former mayor, Rico, about closing off that used to be their little trailer out there, the welcome wagon trailer. Now that little parking lot's used nothing more than just a place to throw their trash and spin their cars around. Three o'clock in the morning spinning brodies. Remember one car burned up out there? Yeah. So I get a little tired of that because it wakes me up at three o'clock in the morning when they're doing that. And then, you know, it's just a trash dump out there, beer cans, they dump out their McDonald's and all that kind of stuff. Ask Rico, we put a couple of those cement blocks up there, what are they called, Jersey barriers? That would stop it if they could do that. But, you know, you guys don't live up there, I do. But those are my two big things. But there are some, if that asphalt's coming apart, there are some drainage problems up there, and I could show somebody real easy how to fix that, except I'm not in the greatest physical condition. But it wouldn't be that hard to fix. So if somebody wants to come up or maybe you want to see you guys, I can show them real quick when it needs to be done. Not difficult. Okay? Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Will you address that?
Yeah. Yep.
I've used phone number to everything, I got all that.
Okay. Thank you. Second speaker is Mike Yurkum, and he wants to talk about pickleball courts.
Thanks, guys, for a few minutes. I got the short straw, so I'm the pickleball dad fly for the evening. I think you're meeting on Monday to do the real discussion about it.
Yes.
And let me start by saying, the people who play pickleball here still are liking the site location at Los Neños. I don't know if that's everybody's choice. It's our choice for these reasons. It's by the Riverwalk, it's close to downtown, close to Hilton Gardens. It'll be much cooler, as far as I can tell, from any other place we could play because it's got vegetation on it. That'd be our first choice. Now, here's a bunch of rhetorical questions, because nobody can answer them. Does the Hilton Gardens want in on this? They want to build pickleball courts. It's going to be just a few hundred yards away. I don't know how that would even work out. I don't know if Cy would pony up some money or not. That's the first rhetorical question. Who owns Noah's Ark area? We're parking currently in front of the basketball courts by Noah's Ark. And I've heard many different things about Chaminot et al. owning a portion of that property. And I don't know where that stops and starts, because somebody had mentioned previously about, we do it down in Los Neños, but there's a parking problem. And I can't address that because I don't know where the city property stops and starts. Jared really took all the wind out of my sails this evening. I got a bid for six pickleball courts from Palmer Lake that came in at $199,600. And I thought, well, that's well within their budget. They bid here, and some of you people may know this, I don't know. The bid here came in at $298,000, $100,000 more. Could be mobilization down in a place that's remote. Could be the cost of materials more. Could be, I don't know, that's what the market will bear, I'm not sure. That leaves, according to what I know, yet another rhetorical question. We have $370,000 allocated for this. Could be a made-up number, it's just what I heard. That leaves us at $72,000 for what would be required for the site engineering and the site prep for them to do it at the $298 figure, which would potentially put us at the money allocated for this. Everybody knows what source well is, I'm guessing? So it seems a constant problem with this project has been these RFPs that have to go out, and my understanding, I'm just getting up to speed on this, is source well precludes that. These people have already been vetted, you can just pick one, they already are allegedly capable of doing what they said they're going to be doing. And this company, Renner, which did the Palmer Lake thing, is a source well contract, whatever that's worth. There was some conversation about restrooms. The pickleball community will take care of that. We will pay for a portlet, if that is a concern, out of our own pockets. Finally, and this is, I'm grabbing at straws here, does anybody know Jeff Sappalvala? Am I saying that right? From Western Civil Engineering? None of that rings a bell?
Yeah.
This gentleman has suggested that he would do most of the dirt work at little or no cost, which chews into that $72K that we would require for site prep and engineering, et cetera. So I think maybe if we got more community activity, in terms of, it seems like everybody around him moves dirt. I personally don't, but everybody I know does. At $72,000 that we were talking about trying to stay under, maybe could be reaching. That was it. Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item number five is the consent agenda approval. Item five eight is approval of the regular meeting minutes of June 18th through 24th. Item five B is approval of bills in the amount of $2,484,610 and 25 cents, and approval of the payroll from June 22nd, 2024 through July 5th of 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 6A, we start the public hearings portion. 6A, transfer of ownership application filed by Colorado Liquors LLC, doing business as El Paso Liquors at 1101 East Main Street, which is formerly known as El Paso Liquor Incorporated. We're going to open the meeting. Mr. Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Could I ask, please, are the applicants here? Okay, would you come forward, please?
Sure.
Thank you. And gentlemen, if you would, would you please identify yourselves? Just give us your names, just a second, I probably will get them.
My name is Preet Jyotsen.
Could you please speak up a little bit?
My name is Preet Jyotsen.
Okay.
My name is Sorinder Singh Brock.
Thank you. And Mayor, council members, as you will recall, in a transfer of ownership of a liquor license, the only questions are whether the applicants are of sufficient age, and they look like they are. And also, I know, that's right, although I have been carded for things, but sufficient age and also sufficient moral character. In your materials, you have the background checks for these two individuals, they passed the background checks. I would suggest to you, therefore, that it is appropriate to approve the proposed transfer of ownership of this license.
All right. Questions?
I have no questions.
I have none.
No questions?
All right.
That was easy.
The hearing is closed. I need a motion to approve the transfer of ownership by Colorado Liquors, formerly El Paso Liquor. Mr. Williamson moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Trahell?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good luck.
Item 6B1 is a second reading of an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city. 6B2, all public hearing, amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. The hearing is now open. Hi, Mike.
Hi, everybody.
People sneak up on me, I'm not so intent on...
As you know, this is a second reading. You actually have two agenda items, so I'll just present it one time, because it's a serial annexation. The, I believe, any acres on the west side of the BSNF right-of-way is being considered for annexation for the creation of a Love's Travel Plaza. It did go through all the necessary steps, and we're here at the public hearing tonight to take action on whether to annex the property into the town, or the city, sorry, and zonate community commercial. It did go through Planning and Zoning and Variance Commission with a recommendation to approve, and if approved, it moves forward. You also have tonight an annexation agreement that I'll speak to specifically, but there's really only two major components in that. One is that they are planning to do an RV park. City code doesn't have an RV enterprise tax fee. And then the other issue with the RV fee is that there's no water associated, it's just a dumb fee. So they agreed to a $10,000 enterprise fund fee to make sure that fund is made whole, as well as bringing up El Moro and Freedom Road, the intersection, after they put their caps in, they're actually going to do a mail overlay. There's some specifics to exactly how that's going to work out, because of just determining what exactly is on El Moro Road right now and the thickness, but it's substantially similar to what's going to be in that agreement. Beyond that, I'm missing one important point. Maybe not. Yeah, so the first 65 is your first ordinance, and the last 25, the 80 is the second ordinance for tonight. The applicant is here, represented by Three Rocks Engineering, if there's any technical questions. But I think they have met, oh, I don't have to ask one of this. The county commissioners did review, because over 10 acres did do an impact feasibility report for the county as required in their statute, and they had no concerns about that.
Good to know. Thank you. Okay, let me start over. Yep. Okay. Mr. Williamson.
I have no questions at this time.
No questions?
No.
T?
No.
I read through all of this, and one thing that I noticed is that the Planning and Zoning Variance Commission recommended that we approve a sign that is 80 feet high versus 55, which is the difference. I drove out there this afternoon, kind of trying to get a sense of where you would first see that sign as you were coming south, and it seems like it's not until you go around that last turn, and I kind of wanted your thoughts on that.
Yeah, so the issue and the reason that the Planning and Zoning Variance Commission did approve that height is that the site sits about 20 feet into a hole, and one of the big concerns is that you have truck traffic coming, and if they don't get that visual cue ahead of time for the Travel Plaza, they won't be able to cue and get over. And so the site distance, and the applicant actually did a pretty good visual for the planning commission showing where on the highway that is. And so they did make a recommendation for the approval of that additional height. And I think it's a legitimate safety concern, being that you don't want a tractor trailer all of a sudden having to get over to the right lane.
Yeah, that is, it's a quick exit right there, so I can understand that. Are they planning to raise the site at all?
They, I mean, there's some fellow come into the site, but that, if you bid on there, the drop-off from El Moro is pretty significant. And so that's the issue, is getting it up above the freeway. It's also a bit...
The only other thing that I wanted to comment on, I understand we're not now looking at their development agreement, which I assume will be how they go about, you know, this site plan. But I am getting people, as they're learning that this is coming to town, are starting to express some concerns about light pollution, about whether or not it could deplete the local employment supply, because there's not a lot. So I'm just wondering how, and whether or not Love's is going to be at all, or it has as a corporate policy, to be a good neighbor to the cities that it builds nearby, so that it's not only just servicing the people that are on the highway, but also directing them into the towns, so that that business isn't completely lost. Do you know anything about that?
I will allow the applicant to respond to those questions. The only other thing I will add to before I get out of the way of the applicant's answer to those questions is that you are correct that they, after annexation and the rezone, they still have to get through the final review of the building permit. So that is an administrative task. So like drainage, the lighting, those types of things are reviewed, a staff will look at the permits issues. But I'll let Nathan.
My name's Nathan with Three Rocks Engineering. In response to if Love's is corporately is required to be a neighbor, I don't know if they have a corporate policy, but what I can say is that I live in Canyon City. We helped Love's bring the new Love's to Canyon City that came and was finished construction last year. And they have been really beneficial to our community, not only being a great spot for people to pull over and stop right before they get to town, so that they slow down and kind of make their way through town, but also they pour money into the community through various, donating to various nonprofits, donating to various events that go on in the city, you know, 5K runs and things like that, that end support. So I would say that Love's likes to keep their public, the public opinion about them in good manner, so they seek to do that through the community as best they can where they go.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mayor, I had, I did have a question, if I may. And I may pretend Michael as well. It's more of this line of questioning, so if it's outside of the scope, I mean, please, I don't know. A lot of people have spoken to me, too, and I want to be very careful, this is not a question that's indicating I don't like the idea. I'm really excited about Love's coming to town, but it is growth, right? And with that comes change, and I think that some people, and rightly so, are concerned about that. To Michael or your experience, what can we do as a town to help people stopping there not become just a drive-thru? I mean, you know, you'd get gas, bathroom, whatever, and then hit next town. We really want people to come into Trinidad and, you know, experience Trinidad, spend a few bucks here, and do that and not move on. I mean, I think that's something, as much as is possible, we should try and remain in the driver's seat and make changes for it. Have you had any experience with that?
Well, I would, so what you're getting into is the document that controls the wider community discussions is your comprehensive plan. And this area is, exit 18 is a growth area of the town and the industrial park out there. And so this use, you know, with the community commercial zoning and gasoline is an industrial, it's commercial plus an industrial, especially because we're doing tractor-trailer service there. But what I would encourage you, because this also came up in the land use code discussion the other night, about when should you look at your land use codes and make revisions to that? I believe the last comprehensive plan was 2017. So it's about a 10-year cycle when you're, as a community, should start looking at that. And what I will say is that it's important, that document, some of the, I'm dealing with this in the town of One of Isso, where I'm helping with a comp plan. I think communities that are struggling with growth are starting to look at their comp plans and say, the vagueness of our comp plan allows for anything and anything, because it doesn't, it's just trying to make everybody happy. And a lot of communities now have gotten very specific about growth areas, what the community vision is, and et cetera. And that document is led by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they bring forward a recommendation to council. So what I would suggest be looking towards is, you know, you have an area-wide plan coming in front of the council in the next couple of months that's being completed, and then as, that's related to downtown, but as you talk about community growth and where you want to see it, that conversation is a comp plan, and that's where you really get that input, and that goes into a document. And comp plans are regulatory, so they, you know, you will see in the references to the annexation policies that does this use meet the comp plan vision. And so those are, those are the opportunities for the community to put that out there, so that if you do see growth on the periphery, that might not make sense in the future. That is a policy then that the planning commission can lean on on a decision, maybe not to allow something to dissohere in the future. Not saying that that's the right decision tonight, but as you start talking and having that community conversation. And I will say, you know, the, as you go into a budget season, comp plans are not cheap, but there are grants that you can go after. So if you're budgeting for that, you could probably be going to, you know, the state or other funders assist with the comp plan, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
And I might just say on a practical sense, you know, again, I can't speak for Love's, but, you know, I stopped at the Travel Center today on the way down here, and I saw all the maps and things that you guys have of what's going on around here and things like that. It may be worth talking to the general manager, whoever comes to Love's, and saying, hey, could we put some of this stuff up in the Travel Center? Because I imagine that the Travel Center may draw more people to stop than the rest area. But, yeah, so just little practical things like that, that kind of give people an idea of what's going on in Trinidad, what food is here, all that sort of stuff. Thank you.
You probably don't know the answer to this question, but does Love's historically hire local employees, or do they, is it impractical for them to be in there?
I don't know the answer, I'll come in. But I believe they hired mostly local employees in Canyon City, so.
I don't have a question, I have a statement, because if you look at exit 11, my family was involved in the development of the truck stop there. And it seems like over the years, the community and businesses are growing out to that area. So, you know, I understand your angst, and I'm a business person, I feel it too, but we can hope that people will start developing more, you know, and businesses more. That's all I have to say on this. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, the hearing is closed. Oh, anybody here to speak for or against the annexation? Being met, the hearing is closed, I need a motion for amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification for a land annex to the city to community commercial. So move. Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 62A, second reading of an ordinance amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 6C1, second reading of an ordinance annexing certain territory to the city. Item 6C2, public hearing, amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. The hearing is now open. Because it's a mirror image, does anybody else have any questions or additional questions or comments? Mr. Yurkum?
I do not.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience to speak for or against? There being none. The hearing is closed. I need a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 6D, I'm sorry, item 62A, second reading of an ordinance amending the zone map by establishing the zone classification of certain land annexed into the city of Trinidad to community commercial. I need a motion, please?
So move.
Second?
Call the vote?
Shu?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trahell?
Yes.
Creago?
Yes. Item 6D, public hearing of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, correcting real property records of certain property known as Eagle Rock subdivision located in the city of Trinidad, Los Anamos County. The hearing is now open.
All right. This is the fun one. So over the course of six years from 2001 through about 2008, the Country Club Ranch Annexation, also known as Eagle Rock Subdivision, went through a series of annexations and development agreements, and then failed during the Great, defaulted during the Great Recession. A new developer has bought a Ray Duran and took title through a special warrant TD. The issue that you have is that you have a mess on your hands with the title and previous agreements that are tied to that property. And good faith, the city staff worked with the developer, the new developer, Ray Duran. The primary issue is before defaulting, the Dryland Pacific's no-fault Mr. Duran recorded illegally a plat for the second phase of the Eagle Rock subdivision. And what that did was it created, the county recorded that and created tax IDs for a bunch of parcels that never received any town approvals, never had a subdivision improvement agreement, wasn't any of those improvements ever been required. And for any type of movement that occur on this property, we need to pass this ordinance to clean the property records. The other big, very interesting thing that was kind of a new lesson for myself, was the fact that the first phase was actually property... fact that the first phase was actually property were sold, this is about four lots sold to private owners that are no longer under Mr. Duran, those lots are no longer under Mr. Duran's control, as well as the fact that developer actually started and got about 50% of the infrastructure in the ground, including water and sewer, basically missing a street that was required for Phase 1. Had it not been for the sale of those four properties, we probably would have had Mr. Duran completely start over, but the fact of the matter is that because there was transfer to other folks, we are kind of stuck with the plating of Phase 1 and the infrastructure that is there. What I will say on Mr. Duran's behalf is that he has stepped in and worked in good faith with the city and posted after the, after the development agreement was passed, he did post the required escrow to allow the Saddle Road bypass, which was kind of a major hangup, to occur and to continue forward, which is basically, in my opinion, taking the $10,000 pound gorilla out of the project because that's what was the big mess with the previous developer, at least from what I could determine from those that went back and forth for six years. So what is happening is that by connecting the development on the north side of Mr. Ray Duran's development is creating capacity down below for his development and plating to where the original sewer was laid into the development. So that work is going on and going forward, and as well as he has posted, once this ordinance is passed, he'll post a performance bond, once the plans are for Phase 1 to complete that infrastructure. At that point, he can then proceed with a major impact for any other plans that not only is Eagle Rock subdivision, but there's about 80 acres, or actually quite a bit, this might be 160 acres, to the southeast that he is also potentially coming in with master plan. But what this, what this ordinance does is it cleans title, it orders the clerk and recorder at Los Anamos County to basically recognize that the Phase 2 plat is invalid and that those parcels that are currently on the tax records be removed, and only that Phase 1 plat. The second thing that does also happen in this ordinance is that the previous action by the council, which was approving the development agreement for the Phase 1, now replaces all the previous agreements that the property was tied to. So therefore, basically, currying and default and allowing Mr. Duran to proceed. So I will say, because it came up just as a matter of public record, we are relying, this is a defunct subdivision, you, you know, it was asked, how could we be so sure? We are relying on a title commitment produced by a second party, but that is, that is the typical way of going about this, and that's basically what we had to rely on as a matter of public record of what is actually going toward in this property and come through to get those agreements. As you'll see, a list of all the different agreements that are in here, like this is being repelled and replaced by. But the idea is that basically, the Phase 1 plat, which is, which will actually give Mr. Duran about 14 additional lots once he puts the infrastructure in, and to allow that to proceed without basically putting those four additional property owners in any kind of bind, because they are, they were already legally platted, so. It's a mess, but I think we're getting through the, getting to where we have a clean slate to begin an actual public process on that.
Thank you, Mr. Yurman, for going through the tedious work to help us straighten that out.
No problem.
Mr. Yurman?
I have no questions. So, on the, the four owners of the property there, who did they purchase that land from? From the Eagle Rock?
Dryland Pacific, from at least what I can tell, yes.
And do they have any claim whatsoever after this is done? Will anybody of the association do that?
No, so the, the other thing that wasn't created and never was recorded was there's never a homeowners association, there's a reference to a future homeowners association, but that's, that's part of the whole deal is that by what we've created, they, that, those four homeowners won't be tied to any of Mr. Duran's future plans because he's finishing out Phase 1 and all the obligations required under that. And to that point, what's really important to understand is that that Phase 2 plat actually dedicates pretty significant open space areas to the town, which right now, without an HOA and not without a legal plat and all the easements and right of ways, you know, you would never accept any of that without any of these binding agreements, and that's why we have to get that plat off the public record.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Yurman?
No questions.
Mr. Thurman?
No questions.
After the last time, no questions.
Okay.
I just have, so you're the professional, and do you have any qualms about any of this? Do you think, I'm assuming yours, you're in agreement that this is the right way to perfect this land and get the development going?
I would say you're correct in that statement. The my qualm would be that I would never, allowing that Phase 1 plat to continue on because it's in default and recognizing it is my qualm, but I don't have a solution because of the transfer. Had the transfer never occurred to the other property owners in that plat, then I would be recommending that Mr. Duran starts completely over and everything, but that, that we wouldn't even, we would be actually erasing even the Phase 1 plat, just allow him to start completely fresh.
Is that illegal, during the transition? Did you have to, could you have fixed it first before making that swap over to Duran?
Or? No, the, so the Phase 1 plat was recorded, and when that was recorded, it created boundaries for every one of those lots that were sold to the private owners, right? And so that developer at the time actually started to install the infrastructure, so I forget the street names and if I can find the private, but.
Peak Street?
Peak, the property's along, correct, the property's along Peak Street. So this is, this is what happened, this is the original plat that we are recognizing as valid. The properties here, these ones were sold.
Okay.
And so the developer took advantage of infrastructure and stuff that was there.
Right, that's what I'm saying, is that, so it's not a legal lease?
I, I, the only thing I can gather is the reason that this all kind of went off the rails is that the Saddle Ridge bypass requirement was so large that the previous developer fought to try to not have to do it. And by the time they finally realized that there was no way around it because you can't over, can't overflow a sewer and other kids' houses, that the recession happened, they went, so that's, that's what I would gather, but again, that's from correspondence records. It's, it's an interesting one.
Thank you, Mr. Yurman.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience to speak for or against?
For what?
Listen.
Anybody to speak up?
For or against this issue that's on the table? Okay. Then the hearing is closed, I need a motion.
Salute.
Second.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Creggo?
Yes. Item 6D1, second reading of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, correcting real property records of certain property known as Eagle Rock subdivision located in the city of Trinidad, Los Anamos County, Colorado. I need a motion, please.
Salute.
Second. Call the vote, please.
Ogultry?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Truhill?
Yes.
Devono?
Yes.
Creggo?
Yes. Item 7, unfinished business, 7A, a public hearing on a new hotel and restaurant liquor license application filed by Busy Bee Operations LLC, doing business as The Hive, at 228 West Main Street, Suite B. We are going to be opening the hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Mayor and council members, if I could please, to begin, I have, and we have Ms. Franks here, who by the way, I believe is still under oath, right? Didn't we administer the oath and?
No.
Oh, okay, okay, so if we could, please.
Please, Mr. Yurman, do you swear in your testimony about to give us the truth of the truth? And I'm about to truth? Yes, okay.
And so, mayor and council members, three preliminary matters that I would like to address with you before we begin. Number one, you will recall that we continued this matter from last time, primarily to obtain information about an entry on Ms. Franks' previous criminal history. I want you to know that now with your packet of information, we have answers regarding that question. So what concern, and this is towards the, the back of the packet, but what concern me is that Ms. Franks' prior criminal history from the state of Missouri for the year 2002 indicated an entry for a felony. And that matter, we have since been given a copy of a document from the Circuit Court of Barry County, Missouri, that is in information, this is a charging document, and this charging document, this is also in your materials now, this document indicates that the charge was brought as a misdemeanor. It was an allegation of $101.39.
Really big difference.
So, you're right, exactly. So it was brought as a misdemeanor, which is also consistent with the disposition in this matter, which shows a fine of $10, no jail, no probation, fine of $10. So I think the question of the entry on her criminal history has been answered, and there is no felony conviction. Okay, so that's number one. Number two, I was asked to address the question of a certificate of occupancy and how that, you know, how that would work in terms of a liquor license and the issuance of a liquor license. Some of you that have been on there for a while know that while a liquor license can be approved, it's not issued until an applicant has their certificate of occupancy. And so if you approve the liquor license this evening, it will actually be issued to Ms. Franks and the LLC that she represents until there's a certificate of occupancy. So also, the landlord in this matter is the city, so there's that. But anyway, I just want to let you know that a person has to have their certificate of occupancy before they can have their liquor license issued, if that makes sense. The last matter I want to tell you is, there was a petition that was circulated before, and that petition was not, not great for a number of reasons. I don't need to go into the reasons why. There was a second petition circulated by Ms. Franks that is in your materials, I believe it has 40 affirmative signatures in support of her application, so the petition is sufficient.
I'm happy to share where the first one didn't work, it was my fault, so, that's me.
Well, and, you know, if you're not a petition circulator, there are things that can arise.
I've learned a lot of stuff, yeah.
And it probably, it probably could have sufficed, but we can just throw that one out and you can use the second petition in support of this application. I would suggest that be what we do here. Any questions on those matters?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Is that a regular course of business, course of action, if there's a concern with the first petition to grant time for the second petition, is that something that's normally occurs?
Yes, and I would say if we had an otherwise complete application and the petition was insufficient, we would require the applicant to go out and do the petition again. So, you know, it might have to be continued. Now, in this case, of course, last time the hearing was open and continued until today, but we would require the applicant to go out and get a sufficient application so that they could demonstrate that the needs of the neighborhood, which is the city of Trinidad, are not being met. Okay? May I, may I begin?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Franks, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, Kristoff or Christina Franks?
Kristoff, please.
Okay, absolutely, good evening, ma'am. You are the sole member of Busy Bee Operations LLC?
Correct.
And that is the applicant for this proposed liquor license?
Correct.
Okay. And you're, you do business as, or you would be doing business as, The Hive, is that correct?
Correct.
And ma'am, you are, as I said, you're the only principal and member of the LLC, and this is a Colorado limited liability corporation in good standing, formed on April 17th of 2024, does that sound correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And this is an application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And your address, ma'am, I believe is at 228 West Main Street, Suite B?
Correct.
Okay. And this, this place that we're talking about, this is located in the Space to Create building?
Correct.
Okay. And so council is aware, this is historic preservation zoning at this location, so, just so you're aware. Now, ma'am, I want to ask you, because if you're the only person on the LLC, if you're approved for this liquor license, you understand that you are ultimately going to be the only person responsible for whatever happens on your premises.
Correct, yes.
Okay. And I'll let you speak to that more in a moment. But I want to ask you also, ma'am, regarding your criminal history, the only entry you had on your criminal history was the bad check charge back in 2002 in Missouri?
Correct.
Okay. Now, do you want to explain to council anything about that?
Yes, there's also a statement in the packet that talked about that this was a, it was a case of stolen identity, but we didn't call it that in 2002, it was just someone stole the checkbook kind of situation. And that is, I've got that statement saying that I had, I didn't know a lot at 22, let's be clear. But I went and just took care of it, thinking that was what I was supposed to do, and have since learned, probably should have made a police report, probably should have had a lawyer, didn't do those things, would do them now. So that was the statement saying all of this was kind of tied to that. And so a big surprise to me when it was on my record and obviously was affecting things in the future, so we've cleared that up though, so we're good, everybody's feeling good about life. And so that statement is there saying that that was a part of that, if there's more explanation needed, I'm happy to offer it.
Okay, thank you. So ma'am, you are, you understand that your landlord is going to be the city of Trinidad?
Correct.
Okay. And you have, as part of your submission, you have a copy of your lease that I believe is an 18-month lease for the consideration set forth in that lease?
Correct.
Okay, and the amounts are in there, so, so council knows. Now, there's also a diagram in your application. And just for the record, would you explain, please, what you would be doing if approved for the restaurant and the area, the area in there, please?
Certainly. The liquor license will cover the entirety of the building, though we will not be using the entirety of the building for day-to-day business. The day-to-day business will go on in the cafe portion of the building, which I believe is a highlighted or bold line on that concessionaire's agreement than is the part that covers the rest of the building. So we would, when the opportunity arose for liquor to come into the building, it would only be through me for the liability and responsibility of that license. So basically, you can't throw a wedding and just bring in liquor and I be responsible for it, type of situation. So we've spent a lot of time talking to Margie and Marty at the city, at Space to Create, about how this works and where the lines lay and first rate of refusal, but when it comes to liquor, because it is my liability, because it is my insurance, I want to have final and only say of the building. I don't, anyone, no one can wander out of our space into rest of the spaces, we have doors that are being built in for that reason, so that the space when I'm not there is safe, and the space when there are people in there, the outside is safe. So it's a really important thing that we keep that contained, and that those doors allow for fire escape, but not for people coming and going in a space when we're not open.
And what was your plan, looking at day-to-day operations for the restaurant that is going to be in there?
So food is really the first and foremost piece of it. We know to feed people is to love people, and that's always kind of been our goal with this conversation. No one opens a restaurant because they're bored. So how do we take this vital piece of downtown and support the vitality that I know can be in place there? It's next door to the visitor's center, what it says about the city, what it says about someone being in that space for the first time officially, those are all really important pieces when we talk about what we're doing in the city of Trinidad and what the direction of rising all the boats downtown is. So we want to offer food in a time-space that's not really covered currently, so food until 9:00 PM downtown isn't something that currently happens, having food on a Monday and Tuesday is also not something that currently happens. So where does the businesses that are open Wednesday through Sunday, or Tuesday through Saturday, where do they go? Where do they eat? How are we supporting? How are we supporting our industry, without calling it an industry? So I want to make sure that the people that talk to our locals and to our visitors every single day are loved in a way that's pretty basic, which is with food and beverage. So Monday night is family dinner. And maybe it's pot roast, maybe it's lasagna. However, we can come together and feed Bella Luna and All Max and Mission. Those people give and give and give. As a small business owner already, I understand that. So who's feeding them and who's supporting them? To say that we're for small business requires action, and this is our action movement. To take care of the people who live here on a Monday and Tuesday, and to really take that vitality, that history, basically pick the ball up and run it, coach. How can I create that excitement and create that downtown? And I believe that that's always through community, which is food to me.
Thank you. And ma'am, you have also, as part of the application, you have executed with the city a facility use and concessionaire's licensing agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and you have an agreement about what events will be done, how you will select?
Yes.
And okay, and that's a non-exclusive use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. So I want to ask you now to the di, or, excuse me, the petition. You circulated the petition this instance?
Correct.
And you obtained all the signatures on the petition? And does it sound about right that you obtained, in the second petition, you circulated about 40 signatures?
Correct.
All of whom were in favor of the, the application?
And everybody put their age. That's the person. Everybody put their age, everybody was in agreeance.
Okay. So Ms. Frank's, I want to ask you, ma'am, have you ever been on a liquor license in the past?
No.
Okay, this is your first time?
Correct.
You understand that if you're approved, you are, you are required to have a knowledge of the local Trinidad and City of Colorado liquor licensing laws. You understand that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and ma'am, I want to, you know, get back to my earlier point. If you have an event there, you know, you are ultimately going to be responsible for making sure that no one takes alcohol, you know, outside the premises, that you don't sell to minors, that you don't sell to visibly intoxicated persons. If there are violations, it's going to come back on you as the license holder.
As it should, yes, certainly, yeah.
All right. So ma'am, let me ask you, how many employees are you planning on having when you're, let's say, at full steam?
Full capacity for just a cafe area, I imagine, 10 to 12 on a busy occurrence.
Will you have, you know what tips training is?
Correct, yes.
Will you have them tips trained?
Yes, I'm also myself tips trained, manager trained, all of those through the state, yes.
And you'll make it clear to all your employees that if any event violates the liquor laws, it's going to come back on you?
Probably more than I should, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thank you. And ma'am, you understand on an ongoing basis, you're going to have an obligation to comply with all city officials, fire chief, police chief, city manager, city clerk, city attorney, and not only in liquor license matters, but also business city as your landlord?
And I'm a representation of the city in that. Every single day, I represent the city and the Space to Create and the vision of that building. And I think I have proven that with the Fox and the ability to sort of sell that and talk about all of the positives that come from that building. So, yeah, it's a much bigger responsibility than it will ever be let on.
Okay, thank you. And ma'am, I want to ask you, you understand, I know we talked about this on the phone today, but it is an affirmative condition of your lease that you have a liquor license?
Yes.
And so if you want to lose your liquor license, God forbid, if approved, the city could terminate your tenants?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anything else you would love to tell counsel?
I think that covers it, that's all of the things. I think our vision, our personal vision for what can happen and the city's vision's been shared with me are very similar on how we take that space and make it something that is sort of a gem in our downtown and the ability to bridge people that live here and people that visit here. How we do that in a way that's very respectful. Would I like to be all local all the time? Yeah, I would like to just do that. But I also know what it means to have people come and visit our town and take that experience, not just in food and beverage, not just in hospitality, back to their homes and talk about that. Every dollar that we spend, and maybe it's the Main Street perspective that gives me this outlook, but all of those things have to work in a way that matters, and every piece has to be supported. So we understand the parameter of this responsibility. Maybe even more than if I privately owned the business and it was just me. I understand that this is a big bite. And if I'm not to the task, by God, I'll get there. But I also believe that the tenacity, the work, and also the perspective are all there in place to make this a really lovely experience for people coming into our town.
Thank you. I have nothing further.
Ms. Frank said, I've only known you to do everything that you do professionally and with great enthusiasm and energy and follow-through, so I have no question.
No, Krista, just thank you for adding economic impact to the already downtown. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you very much for putting that in the question. We could share you some.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for bringing a restaurant downtown that was still open to us. Not to you, please.
We're all so excited.
So that is like perfect.
And we all have a place to eat after the meeting's done.
I was supposed to blast, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Krista, I always enjoy coming to the tea place to
Thank you.
learn about tea and have a good discussion about increasing the vitality of downtown. I'm excited that you're going to undertake this, and I think it's going to be pull up good stuff.
Thank you, I agree with you. You know, if past performance at the tea company is any indication of what you're going to do in this space, I have no doubt that you're going to do it very well and very successfully. I've kind of lost some of the information, and I apologize. I just need some confirmation.
I know, I make it boring. I make it boring.
Well, kinda. Isn't it true?
Yes, I love it, you can't do that.
You said something about non-exclusive use. Are you talking about the back area?
Yes, the concessionaires covers the rest of the building. So if there's a catering event, then I am able to provide food or beverage to that event, but that's not, they don't exclusively have to use us. They do exclusively cover liquor. That would exclusively be ours, and no other input on that.
Okay, give me this scenario, so there's a wedding, and they don't go through you for the catering. You, then there will be no alcohol?
No, no, they could have, they could just go through us for bar. So I'm setting up some catering menus, different options, just bar, bar and dinner, bar dinner and a cake, you know, that type of thing, so they can sort of pick and choose, all in part, what works through them. And if it's just alcohol, then they deal with us just on the alcohol parts of it. So there's no exclusivity as far as whether or not we're providing the food.
I noticed on the diagram, that one area of the building is like cordoned off with the planters in the front that are outside. The liquor license doesn't go that far, correct? It doesn't go outside, does it?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. And we chose really only to concentrate on the back patio because it's enclosed, right? It's the enclosure in the front that's not there that we wouldn't want to have to sort of deal with. So the entrance will be on Main Street, not through the garage, so that's a little bit easier to keep an eye on things. The back gate, the same way, the patio could be used if it's something that's been rented or agreed upon, but that that is, has signage, it locks from the inside, those types of things. But again, not hindering any type of fire exit.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone from the audience to speak for it or against the liquor license?
And ma'am, counsel, I just have one thing I wanted to add. So we are working on the construction right now, so it's been a fun process, but we are moving forward. When, Krista, are you thinking that we're looking at an opening date? It'll be sometime probably?
In August, yeah, at this point. And we're hoping for the middle of August, kind of at this point, to still catch that summertime crowd. But certainly, there are some things to be done in construction, obviously. And those things are moving right along, and everything's looking like, I stopped by today just to kind of double-check so I could have an update. So it's also the same crew that worked on the Fox, so we have a lot of good relationships. They'll call me and tell me, hey, this is working, hey, this is not working type of situation. And then I'm like, hey, call the city. So it's, it's been really a good experience with them, obviously, in the conversation and sort of being transparent, and how we, as the tenants, then can support that, and what we can do to help with painting a wall or saying that. We're also active in that, just to sort of support that and show that, you know, our sweat equity is importantness to offer as well.
And then the other thing I just wanted to mention in tandem with that, we are, I am putting the final touches on an RFP that hopefully will go out next week for the two retail spaces that we have adjacent to the restaurant. So we're hoping by maybe mid, mid-August to identify retailers to occupy those state, uh, spaces as well, and then have leases executed, hopefully shortly after Krista opens her restaurant, and have that be a good complement for what happens there.
Space to where I ate.
Yeah.
It's not as catchy, but it's also very good.
Ma'am, if this is a program, I'd like to request the executive section for this second. If there's a second?
Sir, second, go ahead and read the second. Second? Call the folks, please. Tobano?
Yes.
Olutrin?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Trigell?
Yes.
Drago?
Yes.
Give us a few more recess to the conference room?
Yes.
It's probably easier.
Hey, guys, good Steve, how you doing?
Good, are you gonna come out for the water parade?
Everything else is just gravy. Ah, so good to see you.
in the executive session were?
Aaron Williamson.
Manny Thurman.
Manuel Trieho.
Karen Grago. Pritju.
Eli Adama.
Aaron Ogletree.
Les Downs. Steve Ruderer.
For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the go-to open meetings law, I would ask that you state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, the next agenda item is to close the hearing. I need a motion to approve the liquor license for Busy Bee Operations doing business as The Hive.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trinhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Tabano?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Mayor Protem, will you read the findings, please?
God. This matter came on for hearing on the application of Busy Bee Operations LLC doing business as The Hive at 228 West Main Street, Suite B in Trinidad, Colorado for a new hotel and restaurant license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado acting in its capacity as the local license authority on June eight, on June 18th, 2024 and continued to July 2nd, 2024 in city council chambers and city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of the area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Christina Franks testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor or in opposition of the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are forty-six liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are seven fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, fifteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, ten tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted two petitions containing one petition section each regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained eighty-four total signatures, of which sixty-five were valid signatures of residents from within the neighborhood twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuing a liquor license at this location. No one signed in opposition. No remonstrances were submitted. The app, five, through testimony and other evidence made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Base six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant offers officers are satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Busy Bee Operations LLC doing business as The Hive at 228 West Main Street, Suite B in Trinidad, Colorado. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations. Good luck. Item eight, eight A, miscellaneous business annexation agreement with U.S. Properties West Incorporated doing business as Loves Travel. I need a motion? Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trinhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Tabano?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Mayor Protem, will you read the findings, please?
This matter came on for hearing on the application of Busy Bee Operations LLC doing business as The Hive at 228 West Main Street, Suite B in Trinidad, Colorado for a new hotel and restaurant license before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado acting in its capacity as the local license authority on June eight, on June 18th, 2024 and continued to July 2nd, 2024 in city council chambers and city hall. The city council having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of the area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Christina Franks testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor or in opposition of the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are forty-six liquor license outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are seven fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, fifteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, ten tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted two petitions containing one petition section each regarding the liquor license application. The petition contained eighty-four total signatures, of which sixty-five were valid signatures of residents from within the neighborhood twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuing a liquor license at this location. No one signed in opposition. No remonstrances were submitted. The app, five, through testimony and other evidence made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets and the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Base six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant offers officers are satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Busy Bee Operations LLC doing business as The Hive at 228 West Main Street, Suite B in Trinidad, Colorado.
In Trinidad, Colorado. Congratulations. Yes, congratulations. Good luck. Item eight, eight A, miscellaneous business annexation agreement with U.S. Properties West Incorporated doing business as Loves Travel. I need a motion?
Second?
Call the vote, please. Williamson?
Yes.
Trinhell?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Tabano?
Yes.
Criego? Yes. Item nine, council?
Thank you, guys. Much good relief.
Good luck. Item nine, council?
Mr. Williamson?
I have a pretty limited report, just that South Central Council of Government finally does have the executive finance director. With that, Mr. Blazey's time should be freed up significantly, so we're really looking forward to increasing South Central Council of Government's presence in both Los Angeles and San Antonio.
No, you'll find.
I thought I misspoke.
No, no, no.
But that being said, also, we've made a change with the housing director there, and so we've seen already quite an uptick of involvement there, and we're able to offer more extended services to people in the region that really do need that. Also, our position for the TPR combination, or opposing the TPR combination, is being well represented and stacked, and that continues to be something that we're really pushing from our side, and I think that that's a message that we really need to carry to all constituents when we can, but that's it from the report.
When's the next TPR?
It will be coming up at the end of July. I'll get you the, but I think it's the last week in July, and it will be in Walsenburg.
Mr. Thurman?
Nothing to report. Hi. I got a book. No, I'm kidding. So I got to go to CML, so that's the one I get to talk about. Thank you for allowing me to go to that. It was a great eye-opening and mind-opening experience. The next one's gonna be in Portridge, and I really would love to see more of his gold. It would be a great opportunity to go up there and just pick up new ideas. The amount of information up there is phenomenal. You know, grant opportunities that we could use, projects, connections, networking, it is just, it's awesome. One key takeaway that I took away from there, one of the biggest focus was civility, cultivating a culture of civility in government. And it was a class I got to take. It was very informative. If you go on your CML page and log in, there is actually a breakdown of that from there. There is also a recommendation of looking into your community and looking towards them to create a referendum on cultivating some type of civility, you know, referendum through some means, I guess, through community. It wasn't very clear, but I thought that was a great idea. This way that everyone's on the same page and consistent and the level of respect. Mr. Ruger and I got to attend another keynote speaker. It was on active listening, and I just wanted to share this because it's so much fun, because I found out that I am not an active listener. I thought I was, but apparently I wasn't, but the process was great, learning how to listen, be heard, acknowledged. And I think in any workplace, that is truly utterly important. You know, it's just one of the greatest things that we need to, we need to continue working on, I think, throughout our entire community is being heard, and I think that'll change quite a bit. One of the other things that I really did enjoy was on our last day, we got to go walk downtown. It's nice. They've done a great job. Very trendy. They have cool patio tables to sit in, you know, outside at restaurants. Great art outside. Our town here, we are about ten steps ahead of it. Maintenance, our maintenance is beautiful. The sidewalks here are walkable. Our streets are walkable. You know, it's well maintained, it's clean. So be very, very proud of what we have. And up there, one of the things we did also get to run into was, there were some mural painters, and we got to walk across, and it was a beautiful mural. And when we mentioned, you know, complimented them, mentioned where we were from, they immediately recognized our town. They said, you guys are doing some great things down there. You have a great art scene. We would love to paint down there if you would help us. And that's a great compliment, you know, for that, all the way up on the top side of our entire state, that we are getting recognized in that community for the work that we've been doing here. So I just want to thank everyone for that opportunity to be able to go up there and experience that. And also on that note, I also would like to ask for a special work session where we could maybe actually have an open conversation about some charter amendments, ordinance changes, and... What's my? I have this right now. Hold on. Yeah, ordinance changes and probably some revenue drivers, so possibly some tax initiatives, if we can just have an open discussion, if that would be allowed, or anybody be in favor of that.
I'm glad you brought up murals. A lot of people have been talking to me lately about murals, and I think there is some misunderstanding about them. I think someone asked, why can't we have any murals in here? A ban on them. So there is a ban that applies to buildings that are within the historic district that are contributing buildings, but other than that, people can apply, people can do murals, and I think they are very invigorating to a city, and I hope people understand that I don't think that city council is against murals in any way. So thank you for bringing that up. The creative district is rolling along, and they are working on their marketing, rebranding, and they just unfortunately lost Lauren Nava, is no longer going to be able to do it because she's too busy, so I know they're looking for new members. And it's an exciting group, and I think people should check it out. It's a lot of fun. And then back to the Walmart opening, and that was fantastic. So proud of that. And I went to the tourism program that they put on. The lodging tax advisory board gave us an update about what they're doing marketing-wise, and it was very good, very well done, and the mayor was there also.
We're gonna have to co-start columns between this.
Councilman Ogletree, when did you say the baseball glove is coming?
It's, they have funded it now, so they've got, the guy who's building it, it's named Bill, I've forgotten his last name right off the top of my head, but he's gonna need some time to construct it, but he has the design all set. And the cool thing about it is that Builders is donating all of the supplies, so all of, it's a larger sculpture than we would have normally been able to get with five thousand dollars for a present. But I don't know, sometime, I'm hoping toward the end of the summer or possibly in the fall. It takes a while.
Be excited to see.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. And I apologize. When I saw Manny's council report, I about...
You guys were actively listening, and I saw that.
I asked him, you're not reading all that, are you?
Sorry, I had to leave my jacket, just for the sake of everybody.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. Mine is pretty much redundant to what Ms. Ogletree said, where I was at the lodging tax advisory board, and there were some people that made suggestions, and I think the board is very actively trying to improve our advertising as a tourism concentrated community, so I think, you know, it was, it was a very nice event. I also attended, along with Councilman Trieho and Councilwoman Ogletree, the Walmart grand reopening, and it is amazing. The district manager told me that what it seems like a small remodel costs nine million dollars. So, yeah. So it was nice to make that connection with the corporation and the corporate officers because they have assured all three of us that they, that there are some non-profits that need some kind of assistance, that they, we just need to contact the store managers. I think we need to spread the word because I think Walmart's gotten a bad rap, that they're all taking no gift. I know in the past when I was associated with Noah's, they supplied us with hundreds of dollars worth of food every month for the animals at the shelters. And secondly, I need some victims, I have, I need some willing volunteers to be in the Fourth of July parade. There's a card for city council, if anybody would like to join me in a vehicle. Eli is gonna drive this time, right? Okay, but I'd like to have a couple other little council people, if some are interested. We're gonna, we're gonna meet at the old Sexy Pizza area at nine thirty. So we have a whole park that we can use, that is at our disposal, so. Pardon? Pardon? Yes.
If anybody wants to go in the truck in the wet parade, I'm also taking that one out. So if anybody wants to go get drenched in soaps, they'll be one behind.
City council will be represented very well. I think that's it for council reports. Item ten is reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things I wanted to report tonight. So first of all, first and foremost, our email system is currently down. We do have that posted on our website to let the public know, but I just wanted to take a moment to explain why that is. We submitted our renewal for our email system through our contractor back in March. Paid all of our invoices and...
And also, on that note, I also would like to ask for a special work session where we could maybe actually have an open conversation about some charter amendments, ordinance changes, and what's my? I have this right now. Hold on. Yeah, ordinance changes and probably some revenue drivers, so possibly some tax initiatives, if we can just have an open discussion, if that would be allowed, or anybody be in favor of that.
Helen?
Cynthia?
That's it? That's all I've got, guys?
Nothing from the last night's campaign.
I'm glad you brought up murals. A lot of people have been talking about murals, and I think there is some misunderstanding about them. I think someone asked, why can't we have any murals in here? There's a ban on them. So there is a ban that applies to buildings that are within the historic district that are contributing buildings, but other than that, people can apply, people can do murals, and I think they are very invigorating to a city, and I hope people understand that. I don't think that City Council is against murals in any way. So thank you for bringing that up. The creative district is alone, and they are working on their marketing, rebranding, and they just unfortunately lost Lauren Nava, is no longer going to be able to do it because she's too busy, so I know they're looking for new members. And it's an exciting group, and I think people should check it out. It's a lot of fun. And then back to the Walmart opening, and that was fantastic, so proud of that. And at the end, I went to the tourism program that they put on, the lodging tax advisory board gave us an update about what they're doing, marketing wise, and it was very good, very well done, and the mayor was there and also made.
We're gonna have to start calling this, Trinhau.
Councilwoman Ogultry, when did you say the baseball glove is coming?
It's, they have funded it now, so they've got, the guy who's building it, his name's Phil, I've forgotten his last name right off the top of my head, but he's gonna need some time to construct it, but he has the design all set. And the cool thing about it is that builders is donating all of the supplies, so all of, it's a larger sculpture than we would have normally been able to get for five thousand dollars for president. But I don't know, sometime, I'm hoping toward the end of the summer or possibly in the fall. It takes a while.
Be excited to see.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thanks. And I apologize, when I saw Manny's council report, I thought.
You guys were actively listening, I saw that.
I asked him, you're not reading all that, are you?
So I added my giant book, just for the sake of everybody.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. Mine is pretty much redundant to what Ms. Ogultry said, where I was at the lodging tax advisory board, and there were some people that made suggestions, and I think that the board is very actively trying to improve our advertising as a tourism concentrated community, so I think, you know, it was a very nice event. I also attended along with Councilwoman Trinhau and Councilwoman Ogultry, the Walmart grand reopening, and it is amazing. The district manager told me that what it seems like a small remodel costs nine million dollars.
Wow.
So, yeah. So it was nice to make that connection with the corporation and the corporate officers because they have assured all three of us that they, that there's some non-profits that need some kind of assistance, that they, we just need to contact the store managers. I think we need to spread the word because I think Walmart's gotten a bad rap, that they're all taking no gift. I know in the past, when I was associated with Noah's Up, they supplied us with hundreds of dollars worth of food every month for the animals at the shelters. And secondly, I need some victims, I need some willing volunteers to be in the Fourth of July parade. There's a car for City Council, if anybody would like to join me in a vehicle.
Karen drives.
Eli's gonna drive this time, right? Okay, but I'd like to have a couple of other council people, if some are interested. We're gonna, we're gonna meet at the old Sexy Pizza area at nine thirty. So we have a whole car that we can use that is at our disposal, so.
I can be close.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Yes.
If anybody wants to go in the truck in the wet parade, I'm also taking that one out. So if anybody wants to go get drenched in soaps, it'll be, won't be.
City Council will be represented very well. I think that's it for council reports. Item ten is reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things I wanted to report tonight. So first of all, first and foremost, our email system is currently down. We do have that posted on our website to let the public know, but I just wanted to take a moment to explain why that is. We submitted our renewal for our email system through our contractor back in March, paid all of our invoices, and had everything squared away with them. We did get a few messages warning us that our email system was going to expire, the term of our contract. Our IT staff specifically reached out to our contractor and said, hey, we're getting these emails, and they were reassured that everything was fine. Come to find out, everything's not fine. So we have a Microsoft Exchange account, and we actually use a third-party broker that goes through and administers that for us. So what it ended up being, and I did talk to Mr. Rurley about this, and I'll try to explain it in a way that's understandable, but there is the cloud-based storage for the email, so all of our emails that we send get stored, not on a local server, but a server in the cloud, and then there's the actual administrative side of the platform. Apparently, those are incompatible, and nobody caught that, and that's what we pay this third-party vendor to do for us. So this has been escalated with Microsoft directly now to their highest support team, that type of thing. So we're working as diligently as possible to get our emails back up and running, but it does cripple us, obviously, in the meantime. We're hoping in the next day, hopefully, to get that all back up and running, so I would have sent you an email, but. The other thing, though, that I think is really important, I was reassured by James that all of our emails are going into the system. We have verified that, so we're not missing any emails. It's just going to be a little while before staff in the council starts to proceed with this. So, but like I said, we did put a note up on our website to let the public know, this is not, you know, certainly how we want to be doing business, and it is incredibly frustrating. We will be looking, Les doesn't know this yet, but we will be having conversations about maybe some financial compensation from the contractor, because it really is important that they give us some concessions on this. And I did check with Mr. Rurley, the contractor we're currently using is not the only one that does this service, so it may be something where we need to consider a change so this never happens again.
I'm good at getting money back.
Les is good at that.
Just saying, just saying, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
It should be a whole TV show about that. Couple other things, strategic planning. So just a reminder, our strategic planning consultant will be here, I believe, end of July, towards the second work session to put the final touches on the strategic plan with you all, and then also work on finalizing the implementation plan for the strategic plan. The mayor, I, former mayor Rico, and our planning director, Nick Mason, have been in conversations with Echo Tech. They are telling us that they are to the point where they're ready to develop here in Trinidad, and for those who don't know, that is the company that wants to come in here and manufacture jet fuel using bio material that they'll get from the forest. I did also ask them if they take household yard waste and that type of thing, and they said they would love that. So that's a huge thing. We may be able to, once they get developed, partner with them and have a program where we have less waste going into our landfill and more going to a purpose where it can be reduced. So that is a positive thing. The construction of the facility, they're anticipating will bring about two hundred fifty jobs to the community, and then they're looking at creating about ninety to a hundred permanent full-time jobs. They're, right now, they're working on land acquisition and having some conversations, but it sounds like everything's being buttoned up by them. That's kind of the nutshell. They will actually be here at your work session next Monday to present and answer any questions you all have, so excited for you all to hear directly from them. I wanted to give an update on the animal shelter. You all may have heard, a few weeks ago, we were starting to really see a lot more animals show up. So I did get a chance to talk to Pam. What's happening is that Colorado is being viewed as a state that other states want to bring their excess animals. So a lot of our surrounding states are now having problems with overcrowding in their shelters, so they're bringing them to Colorado. Oftentimes, we can't, and not just our shelter, but shelters in Colorado can't accommodate the animals, so they're being left stray and that type of thing. But that has been tapering off. We went from sixty-seven animals, which is way too many, to now down in the thirty-seven range. So I'm very proud of the staff out there for managing that and doing what they need to, to keep the animals safe and give them the best life that we possibly can here locally. I wanted to mention, you all may have seen some news, it's been all over the news, there was a Supreme Court ruling last week about reversing their 2010 decision on really local agencies being able to enforce camping bans, or camps, not bans, camping laws for homeless residents. So they have reversed that, so what that means is local governments now have more authority and flexibility to enforce local camping bans, but it's something where I've talked with Detective Ley, we don't want to just move full steam ahead and start removing homeless without a conversation with the community, the homeless coalition, and you all as well. So the next steps, we still want to move forward with seeing if we can identify an encampment. That's very hopeful, to have a designated place for them to go, so that we can, A, provide services as a community, but then, B, really give that alternate place if we are telling them to move from any of our public property. I think it would be a good idea for council to have a discussion, looking at our camping ordinance holistically, and maybe setting some parameters. There may be some places where we want to say, this is a place where we want to, we don't feel like homeless camping is appropriate, but we'll be bringing that to you all pretty soon. In the meantime, Tuesday, I've invited Detective Ley to come to our development team meeting so we can have a conversation internally about, are there sites available for an encampment, and can we move forward? And that's certainly something that will bring to the discussion with you all as well. I think that's it. Last thing I wanted to mention, you've all heard, I have submitted my resignation. It's not been an easy decision, but it boils down to really two issues. One, just an opportunity came up a little unexpectedly, and I think it'd be a really good fit for me, and then there's just some personal reasons for me here as well. I love this community. I will be here the next two months to work with you on any transition, and I'm more than happy to entertain any phone calls from you all after I leave and be part of the community. So Trinidad is something I'm very passionate about. I want to thank you all and staff for everything you've given me over the last two years, and I may be here longer if Les handcuffs me to my desk.
He would.
Yeah, yeah.
But I just wanted to state that for the public, and that is my update for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ruger. We appreciate that. Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I just want to say, and, you know, I'm glad I always got to go last, because I can respond to anything that's said, but I want to say personally, Steve, thank you, you know, thank you for being here, for coming here, for your time. Hate to lose you. Sorry we couldn't have had you longer, but it's been a pleasure to work with you. And I know I speak for a lot of people in this room when I say that. I tend to speak for everybody, which I know I can't do, and I don't, but for myself personally, it's been a real pleasure, and I'm gonna miss you, and, but thank you again. And I do want to say, you know, people are gonna criticize Trinidad for, oh, we lost another city manager in a short period of time, and I want to say to that, and anyone who would try to criticize us for that, I am confident that City Council made the right choice when the job opening existed and they hired you.
Thank you, Les.
So that's all I have to say at that point. I wanted to say, I was aware of the Supreme Court decision, and I am glad we're going to be talking about that. My understanding was that the Supreme Court decision was they reversed a ban on overnight camping in a municipality, right? And so, and we can have this conversation later, right? And I can get a copy of the case, and you can all have a copy, but anyway, we'll just talk about that, and anyway, that was my understanding. But anyway, I do want to say, council, sorry, and this is the last thing, that we're also going to be bringing before you in the near future a work session, a number of items. One is going to be a request to abolish, and Steve, please help me if I get this wrong, but abolish the space to create oversight board.
That's correct.
And that's kind of a defunct board anyway. They have not been meeting, so we're gonna talk about that and ask council to do that. Also, requesting doing away with council reports, as was talked about before, not my idea, don't be mad, but just that idea, and if you want to do that, if you don't, of course, it'll be funny to give us the mayor who suggested that, and so further in that discussion. And then lastly, we will also be bringing before you, wait for it, you're gonna be very excited, rules of decor, which we have not approved, but we'll be bringing that before you also, and trying to finalize that. So that is all I have. Any questions? Okay.
Just a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
When we were talking about council reports, talking about switching them to the work session.
Right, 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 I'm sorry.
Yeah. So it's less cumbersome for Kim to do the minutes, because, especially when Manny has a five-page council report.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Item eleven is executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators under CRS Section 24-6-402-4E, contract negotiations. Motion to go into executive session.
Salute.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Tabono?
Yes.
Trinhau?
Yes.
Ogultry?
Yep.
Williamson?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Criago?
Yes. There will be no decision after the executive session. We'll do a break until, let's see, let's do 10 to 8. And if you can get back sooner, please do, but it's, take a break. Thank you.
Mr.?